Alright, so let's go. We're gonna call me. Start with the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its name.
And I'd ask for a brief moment of silence for all our first responders, men and women out there protecting us, both domestic and abroad, and just make sure that we keep them close in our hearts. Thank you. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August 15th and the August 5th meeting. So, the motion by legislator Klein, second by legislator Trudell, any additional violations or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And approved. PS1, under resolutions, this is a resolution supporting a United States congressional resolution of the support of classifying 911 telecommunicators as a protective service occupation. Motion by legislator Castler, second by legislator Klein. Director Foley, would you like to elaborate briefly on this?
Yep, so, this is a, there's an act that Congress right now is being put forward, hopefully, and asking for Smoot County's support on this. This is changing the job classification for 911 telecommunicators from office and administrative support occupations to protective service occupations. So, essentially, when the 911 industry was created, the 911 telecommunicators were classified more as clerical office workers. I'm sure pretty much everybody here is aware, 911 telecommunicators do a lot more than just answer phones and type things into the computer. So, I'm asking for some support on this, moving this over so that these classifieds are the same means as sheriff's deputies, flight guards, fire and EMS workers.
This is a change in classification, right?
So, at this point in time, it doesn't necessarily mean anything outside of that we are supporting them being classified as public safety workers and not administrative workers. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't mean anything as far as putting them into a different class of aid of any kind. Doesn't, could have a possibility that they may be that during the next negotiations, during contract, but it doesn't change any kind of current contract terms or anything along those lines. Just puts them into the same classification as law enforcement or fire and EMS personnel.
So, 911 is an integral part of work, an integral part of the whole public safety realm there, especially when they're trying to teach somebody how to get CPR on the phone, if somebody's choking upon that line. So, definitely an opportunity for us to support a special category, basically at one point in time, not belittle any positions, but at one, currently, they're in the same category as a taxi cab dispatcher.
Which really, that's the reason why they were put there at that point in time, because taxi cab dispatchers were, you know, are in office and office and administrative support occupation. And so, like, okay, dispatchers, dispatchers, we put them in the same box, and that's that.
Right. This, this category, would this allow 911 centers to be eligible for any federal or state aid in that category?
Unfortunately, it doesn't change anything like that for us.
Well, I was hoping it does. I mean, I had no problem with the raises, what you're talking about, because I think they're unprepared to do with the caliber of work that they do. I was just hoping maybe it would be helpful somewhere, federal government or state. But if my memory serves correctly, the federal government can't give directly to county for 911? Is that what it is? It has to go through the state?
Exactly. I mean, that's the way that it was set up.
Something's set up that way.
Correct. And unfortunately, most of the federal money that's out there in New York is not allowed to partake in any ways for 911 because the 911 search charges that have been figured, so that excludes their state law.
And we only get like 1%?
Yeah.
Yeah, that much. Alright, any other questions, Kevin? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And approved. PS2, the red budget modification for additional hours for 911. Wanted to hear a motion on that. Bring it forward. Legislator Potter makes a motion, second by legislator Castilla. Director Foley, I know you're moving some money to get us through to the end of the year. Correct, I'm trying to elaborate on this.
Yes, so the additional hours budget line for 911 is used for the, I'm drubbing. It's not, it's not overtime, but it's the shift differential. Sorry, shift differential for our employees that work night shift. So, we use that. So, beginning of the budget year last year, it asked for $42,000, and just need to get us back up to where it asked for to be, that's requesting $9,000. Did look around within the budget, did think this is there this year in budget, don't have any additional place.
It's the first thing when Director Foley brought that forward, I said, "Well, I did your budget." And he said, "Well, you know, we listed out some areas where we normally could look for it, and it's just too tight to accommodate that." Any questions? Hearing none. It's just tight, tight, hard to handle. That's why that, unappropriated, I'm going to be honest with you. Thank you. Good day. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, do a button mark for that to sign. EMO report, EMS.
Good morning, everyone. I'll be brief. Item 1 is pretty self-explanatory. We're still in, up southern, I guess, of the Lake Ontario flooding debacle. The lake is continuing to drop. About a foot a month, it did reduce, maybe three weeks ago, the outflow through the St. Lawrence somewhat, but it continues to drop. Fortunately, we haven't had a lot of rain. You know, we haven't had a lot of rain down the west and the north, so damage has been less. A lot of people in impacted areas after this week. One, the debris's gone, and two, many will probably head back to our own area early to clean up some of their damage in Ontario. And so, we're just along with everyone else riding this out. The state of fire prevention and control is going to be in the area this week and next week to, you know, call back, help us that they put out that aren't being used, water, bladder, release, that type of stuff. Item 2 and 3 go together. Our radiological staff has been very busy getting ready for the upcoming FEMA graded exercise of PM personnel monitoring center in Parrish, and then reception center annual training and exercise fairgrounds, and did a couple trips to Monroe counties to see what they were dealing and how FEMA responded to that. And we've been participating, a number of us, in the jail safety committee, safety training, or planning, rather, and the rescue task force training. And then, lastly, we have a small piece with Harbor Fast providing tech for us to look to do.
Renee?
Good morning. So, very short and sweet report for you today, just a couple things to add. We did talk again the last public safety committee meeting quite a bit about Sandy Creek training. Just want to reiterate for this month, we did have the opportunity after the July 23 component where we added the MCI plan to the training that was happening inside this school. We were able to go back to the updated MCI plan and kind of look at what we had put on paper. When you put something on paper, we had a great collective effort to look at that and revise that plan, but now we had a chance to look at it in the light of what we practiced at that school. So, we did have a few revisions, and we're looking right now to get signatures from all of the agencies so we can have one MCI plan for our county. That will be tremendous for the agencies to all be on the same page, especially for 911. Right now, they have three different MCI plans depending on where that event should occur. So, moving forward, that's exciting. We did have additional stop the bleed courses that were offered as part of the CSI initiative. In our meeting, we are canvassing the school districts to see where they're at with their stop the bleed intentions and current training right now. So, it was good we got some additional battalion members trained out of Battalion 3 because we leaned very heavily on our fire partners to supplement the instruction for skills with those trainings. So, they did have a relief a little bit in the curriculum. We can do 10 students to one skills instructor now, so that was compared to the 8:1, so it's a little bit better group wise for us, reduced us that we need a little bit, but we still lean heavy on our fire partners to help us with that. That's all I have.
Moving right along. To the fire coordinator? 911? You gotta get the topic. Alright, so, for August report, I did pass it up. Did have things get calmed down a little bit? I do want to just make a point that normally, we wouldn't welcome reports walked in, but I allowed it this month for me because the way that the end of the month lined up with the beginning and meeting, this meeting and everything, in order to get true accurate monthly numbers, we had to go after package.
Thank you. Like I said, things did calm down a little bit for us in August from where we had been in June and July. 1,427 911 calls answered, 4,072 wireless calls. They evened out pretty much where they normally are, so we can see if it would increase or decrease. We did see a couple of different incidents from texting 911, which normally we get some, but they're just people testing the waters. This time, we actually had a couple incidents that were created out of those, which were good things, that we had that technology in place. And just, when I reference, there's still six or seven counties in the state we do not have text in them and we've had it for years now. Our low staffing still shows that, shows up in our reach calls answered within 10 seconds, 80.74%. The hopefully light at the end of the tunnel of that is middle of October, second week of October. Our four remaining trainees that are in the group class will be coming up for training and going back on the force, so it'll bring us back up. Right now, we have three out of four shifts that work every day. So, we're trying to offset the part time here on the staff, but it's been showing we're not as good as we could be. So, as far as management activity, had, went to, attended a very good and interesting meeting last week in Steuven County about the possibility of a consolidated emergency services intro that, which is actually something that started originally, but going forward statewide. The state's actually looking at putting together statewide public safety infrastructure made up of microwave networks and fiber networks. So, that'll be something that we hear a lot more going forward, and one of the first implications they were talking about trying to put on that is a shared public service. So, I'll be bringing back more information in the future. Work at 912 is, all the physical work is done, just some computer programming, some configuration work that's left to be completed before we bring that console site up. Expect that in the next couple of weeks here, and that'll drastically increase our availability and functionality in that one, too. So, beyond that, from QA, we are right in the middle. As I speak, I've got a little over half of our staff that's in EMV certification training. This is a three-day class, 21 hours, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, this week, and then next week, the other half is remaining people are taking that Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And we've got a couple more classes coming up on Tuesdays, and then October 8 is our plan for life for that software package to transition us off of the manual card set and computer-based question and answering program. So, that, that's definitely made things a lot more efficient once we get through the change period, and it'll also give us a lot more tools to improve our quality assurance program, which we already have a pretty decent one, and this is going to give us tools to actually do a lot more of that. So, that's meat and potatoes, what's been going on in August.
Please, any questions? Moving right along, third one there?
Thank you. Basically, we grew up to 85 structured fires, actually, as of August 26th. We actually, in the last four days, have had four structured fires. So, they keep going up. Training is moving on. We actually have a training meeting next week to set our fall and winter schedule for state training classes. Renee mentioned stop the bleed. To add to that, we picked up 12 classes through nine mile for some number of electricians, red protection people, stuff, going CPR, first aid, and we're doing stop the bleed in conjunction with that. So, that's one of the things, too. At the training center right now, we just started this week, a three-week nine-mile initial fire brigade class for new people. Just to give you an idea, there's 18 in that class. We did 18 or 19 people in the class this spring. Well, they're cycling operators through, don't like to stay up here very long, I guess, but they're getting trained, and then they lose, they'll be to license class, or they move on to someplace else. So, sort of good for us that we're doing, right now, we're doing two initial training classes a year, but it increases the load. Fridays for the next three weeks will have between 40 and 45 trainees on site, between quarterly training and prior initial training. So, adds to our instructor needs, so. Code enforcement, we've been very busy with the PAB and the records project, and a couple of other projects that are going on. We are behind in our inspections and fire drills, but hopefully this fall, between now and December, we'll be, those caught up, do have Mike Monat's going, one of the deputy coordinators, is going for his certification for COVID course, maybe starting September. So, that'll give us another person to work with on that. The other list are just stuff we're going on. We made it through classic weekend at the Swingle Speedway this week with no incidents, which we'll have to take part in with a little bit of support, and now we'll be on to super third week, which is three weeks away, I think, before. And the only other thing I would remind everybody next week to remember, 9/11, for the people that were lost in that event, but there is a, just one of the things going on. Mexico BSW, there's a Boy Scout Eagle project that is coming to completion, and it's a 9/11 tribute monument that they have directed and worked on. The dedication is on 9/11 at 6:30 at night. Everybody is invited.
Just to piggyback off that, we're on 9/11 as well as 6:00 AM, we are welcome to line the bridge and the street, Bridge Street out here for a procession that comes up. Actually, our clerk is putting that together, this is last year. So, thanks, Don. Any questions? Alright.
Provision? I'm not, I had surgery, I still have a ration back, so. As far as raised the age, our numbers, obviously, have still stayed low. We've had roughly about 20 16-year-old inmate cases, a couple supervision cases. Two cases have gone to heart court, which were bumped back down again, so we ended up going. 17-year-olds and 18-year-olds, they start at October 1st, so they don't know what that's going to be with our numbers overall, couldn't see if we could raise that. At this point, like I mentioned before, we haven't hired anyone under raised the age, just because we don't know what's going to happen. Could happen next year, we'll have to, but at this point, we don't need to. And we're in the process of seeking reimbursement for some past training that we've had when we made it to raised the age, just not a lot of money, but something, so we're going to play on. If that reimburses. Under the CBI grant, that's the program we're running into jail for the inmates. We had one group starting on, in September 16. We completed 12 inmates. We've had several more that have come close to complete, but we either ran least or hollowed out or whatever, so they haven't been able to finish the program, but they pretty much made it to most. We think the grant's going to be extended for next year. We actually got two staff members sent for training this week in another evidence-based program that they're going to be able to provide in jail instead of the thinking for the change that we're doing now. That's all we have for the grant, so all the training, which we're grateful we have.
Remind you, at CBI, send.
How much of behavioral intervention? FPSJP, stands for Supervision, Supervision and Treatment Services for Juvenile Programs. Currently, DSS is the lead agency for that. I'm proposing that probation become the lead agency when the new plan starts, will be October 1st. It's going to change my budget a little bit because the money will be coming through us. It's reimbursed 62% by the state, 38% local costs. Some point, we're probably going to have to do a budget mod, but at this point, we've got to wait for the rest of the billing for some of the programming. Now, through DSS, we're going to have to pay the rest of the bills before we actually take it over to the first. We submitted a plan two weeks ago. Haven't heard back yet. I'm thinking it's going to be approved. I've actually increased the amount of money that we're going to be getting for probation services without a bad grant, so it should help the bottom line a little bit. Hopefully, it's going to apply, but I mean, it will.
Voice and provision.
You're saying that you've got some that don't, are not able to complete the CBI, and they go out into the world. Is there any follow-up that we have, or any way that we can get these guys to be able to have a sense of completing it and final?
We can't because, well, first, the grant only covers inmates. And second, while most of them are not under our supervision, most of them are in other sentences. So, we don't have any authority over them at all, once in case.
It's too bad.
Yeah, if it's, if it's a case where they're in JGR, a split sentence, so they're released, but they are under our supervision, we can look into trying to pick up the final few classes and doing an eternity, but most of them are cases, most of them are under supervision.
Hate to see it just drop down.
That's one of the start. Yep, that's one reason that we're sending two people to do training, to training for another program, because other programs are shorter term. So, we hopefully will be able to get more inmates through that program. It's not quite as long. The curriculum, we're thinking for change, it's pretty long. So, sometimes at the tail end, you can't finish some, but the other program is a shorter term program. So, hopefully, we'll be able to get more people forward.
Question.
Alright.
What, what would it take for somebody, a judge or the DA or something, to require these people to get into the program? Is there anything out there, or are they free Americans, can do whatever they want?
Typically, the judge sentences someone to incarceration. They don't really have any authority to tell them they have to comply with everything. It's my understanding.
So, keep smiling, man.
I mean, a judge could say, "It's in your best interest to do this program," but they can't do anything, maybe the person, they don't.
Other than the sheriff recommending that, "This is what you ought to do," but they can't.
Nobody can, but once they're incarcerated, there's nobody really who's seen or has the authority to do well with their incarceration.
It's again to do what you want.
Well, they're not going to get loose on everyone, I'm sure.
Well, let out, let out. That's better, right?
Alright, moving right along, then. Search and rescue.
Thank you. The months of July and August were very busy for the team. July especially, we had several search activations, including a number of gray bear recreation area. And out of that, we're working with the volunteers, the friends gray bear, the operating gray bear, to develop some discussions on how we can try to alleviate the number of people that are getting lost there. We've had several incidents of people getting lost at night and not being able to follow the signage or find their ways out, and I know it's involved some of the other emergency services in the area, too. So, that's one of the issues that the team is working on. We're having several trainings still. We did a Project Lifesaver training in June with several law enforcement agencies. We did a rescue flight helicopter training a couple weeks ago in August at a parish party department. There were several volunteer party departments around that are murdered in the central area of the county that participated in that. We're need help to set up a learning area for the helicopter and what their capabilities are with rescue flight. Project Lifesaver has been going very well. There was an incident in July where an 11-year-old Project Lifesaver client was lost for several hours, and when search and rescue responded, they were able to locate him within about 20 minutes. So, that was a big, and there's some other training coming up. The team attended the Public Safety Day at the Kennedy Highway Garage, and also had some community presentations on how to treat the non-programs to help educate the public about what to do if they get lost in the woods and how to try to assist.
I have a question, at the gray bear, though.
Yes.
I mean, they're going after dark and then getting lost, or they're going like an hour before and then going out?
They're going to hours before, they're going in before and getting lost and not being able to find their way out in the darkness.
Isn't gray bear have a river on one side and 57 on the other?
Well, it does, but it has several miles of trails in there, and they're either not following the signage or one person, one individual seemed to be going around in a loop for quite a while. So, after dark, they're, you know, worried about getting, finding their way out. One was, a couple people, a lot of young children were there, and so.
Now, do you, do you guys, does somebody have like, you know, 911, just like, you don't call that, but can they just like call on the cell phone and say, "We have a map, follow this direction"? Do you physically have to pull up?
Well, it depends. There is a map.
I mean, do you have like a match for maps somewhere, so you're?
Yes, yeah, there are, the team has that. And there's also a map available that they can use on their cell phone, but they don't, actually, they don't always have that, with them, or the awareness of that. So, that's one of the things that they're discussing, and they're going to be discussing is how to make people aware when they come in. There is a large map on the information kiosk that they'll hand, but sometimes they're not familiar enough with the loops and the different aspects.
Okay. Alright, cheers, sorry.
Yeah.
Mel?
I don't think it pertains to you, because I believe your search and rescue is outside, correct?
Well, pretty much, yeah.
Yes, yes, so, I'm, I'm just wondering, is there anything where like the, the Walmarts in the world and everything, when a child gets lost, is there a rule or anything that we say that as soon as a kid gets lost, the door's shut, anything? I'm just.
I thought you were talking about like the, 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 get lost.
Where the heck are we going here? Nobody can find me here, I'm sure, and they can't see me above the rack, so I know I get lost, but it. But I know I was in Walmart the other day, and a parent couldn't find a child, and then they immediately shut the doors. I didn't know if that's something that we do, or it's the individual stores that do it. Okay, this is like, okay, after so long, this gets done, and we call, there's a procedure. I mean, they found the child, but I mean, it was kind of like, boom, that was it. Doors are closed, and everybody, everybody in the store was searching. And I just, it felt there was a particular procedure.
Marner?
I, I hear your youngest was two months old, whatever, this is two months old. I think that was, I'm not sure, but I think that was one of them, one of the gray bear, where the family was out walking, and there was, there's one where they had several small children, and that's how they moved. Yeah.
Some stores use a lockdown search with people with dementia, elderly that can come.
Okay.
I know some of the.
Right. Go ahead, no, they're, they're on a roll.
We just had this conversation at Seneca Falls State Park. So they have a procedure where if a child is lost, they shut the spray ground down. They come over the lab speaker, ask everyone to stand in place. So like certain places have different procedures. Once they know that a child is lost, that they ask people to do. So it helps to facilitate finding that.
Right. Okay, I may have missed it. I'm old and maybe I'm lost over here. We're in the early stage of working with great friends of Great Bear. What are we looking to be some of the guidelines? I mean, the first thing I would say is that any families that are entering after a certain time that there'd be some person there should say, you can't, if you don't have a flashlight and a map, you're not going any further than right here at the beginning of the trails because it's, you could get lost in there if you don't have a flashlight, you don't have a map. You know what I'm saying? Well, yeah, they've got to do something out there if you're getting your family lost.
Well, there's a simple thing like a tag in, tag out. You know, you can take a tag, you know, anytime.
It's, it's volunteers. So there's not, there are people there, they're volunteers. They're lost all the time, but there's typically not someone there all the time. But they know that the gates are locked. I mean, people, it's their signage that the gates are locked. It's dark. They want people out before darkness falls. But what's happening is people are either misjudging how long it's taking them or something like that. So the discussions are about what can be done to inform visitors when they're going in there to, to make sure they know that they have a map, they know where the map is when they go in, that they have a flashlight. You know, some of it is basic things that people could do to be better prepared. So, and then volunteers at Great Bear are aware of, you know, some of the issues too. So it's basically getting around the table to discuss what, what more can be done to educate people when they're going in there. As far as the check-in system, I don't really know if that's something that friends discuss or if it's, you know, one of the options that they'll be looking at.
Oh, you, you just, you know, it's just a thought because I'm just looking at, you know, the rivers on one side, 57th on the other. But it wouldn't take too much for somebody to fall in the river and, you know, thinking that there's a trail that comes up there. Because I know it from being down at the other end of the river. But it's easy to, you know, it's easy to have a stumble or something like that. I mean, it's not, it's not a friendly area at night. So that's all I'm looking for is the possibility that maybe at a certain time, volunteers will win this. At this time, anybody going in, this is what we're requiring you to have.
Kevin?
Thank you. So, thank you.
Real quick, wanted to circle back to the Project Lifesaver piece. I should have mentioned that real quick. I did get a, I got a report, I get a national report every time then. And they're still at 100% recovery rate with that program, as we've been saying the same things. And there was very, very few fatalities that were actually, which speaks a lot to the success of that program. So I just wanted to throw that out, that, that program is still a serious job in this area. It's still very, very good. Sorry.
Thank you, Kevin. So moving along from search and rescue, if you're done.
Yes.
We'll move forward. The sheriff has a brief report and update from his department. I mean, you probably saw the coverage this morning. Some great news for our SBO program, moving that forward. Several school districts throughout the county, there's been alluded to the active shooter training myself. I attended, I know that legislator Jell attended, legislator Castilla, I don't know if he announced it, but very worthwhile. It was great. And the sheriff can just make good moves here and leaps and bounds. So go ahead and.
Terry just stole all my thunder. I just wanted to say, actually, I just wanted to point out that we did kick it off yesterday. Today's the first day with students. I just wanted to thank this committee for your support and effort. The office committee and the legislature, especially these two gentlemen at the head of the table there. This would not have happened. And I just wanted to thank you guys for that. One other quick issue back to the raise the age. Yesterday was probably our first experience with it. It's troublesome, I would say. We picked up a 14-year-old from Hillbrook. The water here, transporter here for court appearance and family court. And when we were done, the court order said transport from Hillbrook to family court appearance, back to Hillbrook. We got her there, they refused to take her. Reason for that is they had two females in a six-bed wing. And by getting rid of those two females or refusing to take them, they opened that six beds up to 16 and 17-year-olds, which I think they could be taking 17-year-olds. But that's what their explanation was. They could open that up for male 16-year-olds, thereby making more money by filling all the beds. So we brought her back to county attorney's office where she sat for about four hours till we figured it out. And we ended up transporting her to Rochester, which was the closest of the options. The other one would have been like Brooklyn or Buffalo. So I would assume as we move on, this is going to, obviously the idea in Albany is they're forcing each county to have its own few mile detention center. But in their mind, that's where we're headed. We're going to have to have our own detention center.
I, I would like to add that I've done some job shadowing, if you will, in the, not for a career or anything, but as a chair of this committee in the sheriff's department. And I want to commend the sheriff for what a team he has down there. You have great deputies that are really out there making us proud and protecting each and every one of us. And it really, each legislator should just stop and think about, we'll be having more services in this county for protection because it's definitely great to see the, the great work that you're in part of. DA, do you have anything? Alright. Wow, lawyer, this is. With that, that motion to adjourn? Hold on.
I got a question to the sheriff. Is there any particular reason that you picked Sandy Creek first? Just because it's more distance? For your first, the training of active shooters?
No, because the superintendent offered.
It's your, it's your district, Margaret.
Well, I've been asked the question, how come Sandy Creek got it as opposed to somebody else that I said I'd asked?
Well, you know the real answer? Because the sheriff really likes huck a berry cat.
Well, that's a result of that.
That's all we know what we're looking for.
That's true. We have an office for him up there and he doesn't even go to it.
I know. I have trouble getting out of my office.
And I will let you know, it was 10 o'clock the night I got done with the rhino log and the sheriff and the undersheriff were just leaving from a whole day of work in front of us. So that's, that's. Motion to adjourn by legislator Potter, second by legislator Castilla. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?